Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Monday meeting. Budget management review will just start right off. I see building and plannings ready to go.
Good morning, Commissioners Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning. With me I have Mike Wilson, Building Official, Wayne Nelson, Planning Manager, and Trevin Bradley, our Nuisance Abatement Officer. Wanted to talk to you this morning. Just I gave you all a handout of our monthly numbers for May. We, we have had so many inquiries at the counters, staff consults, and a lot of people just coming in and checking what they can do with their properties. It's been nice to see, but the counter's been hopping.
Yeah.
The, the numbers are just static, but the, the inquiries and the, the foot traffic is quite amazing, considering they can do everything with our permitting system at home. So they really don't even need to come in and see us if they don't need to, but they are, which is nice to see.
So do you know what changed? Because two years ago, that probably wasn't the case.
I don't know. It could be a multitude of factors. I mean, from interest rates being high, people are doing more with what they have, or just seeing what, you know, now they're realizing the interest rates really haven't changed. So now they're deciding they're going to move forward with the project that maybe they've been holding off on.
I'll be blunt. I suspect it's because when you go into building and planning now, you don't feel aggression, if you will. It's cooperation is, is what you feel in the public. So that encourages people to come.
Well, thank you for that, because we try hard to make their projects work for them too. So whatever we can do to make it happen, we are trying.
Didn't, didn't we start kind of pushing, or I don't want to say pushing, but advertising or letting it be known that we can do the, you can come in and do the consults with us too?
Yep, and we, we
I think those are a hit.
We help though. We really encourage those, because then the applicant knows exactly kind of what they have in front of them and what they need to do.
Yeah.
And what, any obstacles or what, maybe we can make it easier for them. Because sometimes they try to create their own roadblocks and we try to lessen those.
Yeah, I, I, I think those have been really helpful. Ultimate goal, I would love to see, and I'm not trying, Nick does a good job helping people. I'm not trying to put him out of business, but I'd like to be able to see through our consults and stuff that somebody can actually work through the process them, themselves.
Yeah. So if I go in for a consult, how much do I pay?
Nothing.
Good. And when I leave the council, if I had explained clearly my project, do I leave knowing everything I'm going to have to do?
Yes.
Everything.
As long as, well, for what we know and what they've told us, we give them every bit of information we can to help them along the way.
Now there, I'm sure the details are incomplete, but the steps and the people involved or the groups involved, that's all clear.
Yep.
Because that was one of the major complaints we used to have is, we went in and they said, oh, you got to do this. Then we did that and said, oh, by the way, you also have to do this. And that kept on going in the chain.
And that was Try to give them a complete path forward.
Yeah.
Um, just verbally. I mean, we just, we, we work them through their projects. And we also bring in other departments, Public Works and Environmental Health. So they, they're hearing it from both, you know, the public work side and the environmental health side. Hopefully they get a complete idea of what they need going out.
Do you do that on a daily basis, like end of the day debriefing?
We have them several times a week. And so it's whatever works for their, their schedule and we work with the applicant. We try to kind of streamline them. So we have a couple clusters in the morning and certain days and a couple in the afternoons to accommodate their schedules, but also to accommodate different step, sorry, different staff time. So they're not stuck in consults all day long.
Yeah. I think it's a good thing. They should leave knowing all the nuts and bolts. The things that could change is maybe they didn't understand the slope on your property or doesn't
Right.
The perk didn't come out how we thought it was going to do or different. Those type of things can be unknowns, but the nuts and bolts, they should be able to leave with, right?
Exactly.
Did you want to say something?
No, that conversation captured the scope of, of my report. So just I'm here if you have any questions.
Just, again, just for completeness of my understanding, E H U, they'd lose a key player. How's that going? They don't report to you. They report to the Health Department.
Health Department. Yep. And our relationship with them is great. They're, were, you know, they're, they're just like us.
Are we facing a consequent backlog or have we?
On their end?
Yeah.
Not that we're seeing. Andrea's done a good job with them.
Yeah.
Yep.
So she moved up to take?
She's the new, then she's the new season, the replace season, yes.
And did we replace Andrea?
Yeah, Brian's Andrea's replacement. And I believe they're still looking for replacements underneath Brian, but I know
That's what I'm looking for.
I believe she has somebody starting next week, this week, next week. She is finding them. They're just slowly trickling in.
Anything in here we should be looking at?
No, I think they're pretty static. I just wanted to present to the board the May numbers. They're also online too. I don't believe there's any surprises along the way. I wanted, go ahead.
And when you say online, so the public?
The public can access these at any time. Yep.
Yeah.
We keep them online for years back.
How do they find it?
On our Building and Planning, on the county's website under Building and Planning, the monthly reports.
We often get complaints, things are hard to find. I haven't heard any about building and planning, but.
Well, I think the county's website in general could always use updates, but we try to keep as much stuff on there as we can. So it's at applicants' fingertips. Yep. Another thing I wanted to update is private roads. We had an additional Building and Planning Advisory Committee meeting this last Thursday. We added an additional one with strictly focusing on private roads. Susan Eugenius, the county engineer, had put out a draft proposal of kind of what the board kind of gave her the head nod. And so she moved forward with it. We presented her, the requirements of what some of the stuff that she had in the draft proposal to the advisory committee members. And they had feedback. They submitted stuff. We've kind of gone back and forth. We did have a public meeting last week. We had several members from the public, which was nice. We had not had that before. Not our normal surface mine group, but we had just other community members that live on private roads, deal with HOAs and just kind of some questions that they had and concerns. But it was more personal for them, but it was still nice to have that interaction with public. Some of the feedback that Susan had received, they wanted her to lessen some of the easement standards, some of the curvature radiuses they wanted reduced. I was trying to think what else. Those, and they didn't want to, the, I'm sorry. Yeah, the engineering factors. They didn't want to use the wash dock standards. They wanted to do more of like forestry service roads. So she heard all of their concerns and critiques and just comments. And she's going to take those back. She's on vacation, I guess, for a couple of weeks, sometime in the middle of this, between now and the next meeting. So she's going to bring out some new draft standards that, with all of their concerns eliminated out of there and, and only what they wanted to see and then to come back and get feedback from that. So our next meeting will be in July. And so we're looking forward to seeing if we can get to some kind of a a safety, a safe road that meets the development requirements that does not cost the applicant a ton of money to do their roads. So we're looking forward to seeing what she comes up with. So that's really all I have right now. Like I said, it's just, it's forthcoming, but we're, we're looking forward to the July 18th meeting. We're hopeful it's a lot more workable for developers. So
Good.
Yeah. We're happy to see that.
There's some pretty tough questions in there. Just one that just comes off the top of my head is related to always when you have an interface. So we got Public Works on a county road and then we have a private road coming into a county road. Who controls what that intersection, the design of, of that intersection?
Public Works controls all intersection design. So anywhere within a right of way, you first need to go to Public Works, check the standards. And typically on a private road, I'm getting a little out of my wheelhouse, but they're looking for a paved apron for the, for the width of the, of the approach extending, I believe, back 50 feet. Is the typical standard.
Yeah. Are there distinctions made for the circumstances? Like if you're in the middle of the desert, it seems different than if you've got tall trees and you can't see as you're, as you're pulling out of your private road.
So they do check site distance as well. And there's things they can, that the proprietor can do. For example, pulling back the banks by grading it, removing trees, vegetation, whatever. Public Works will require that. Or they'll look at it and say, no, you, you can't cite your private road there. If it's a new private road, move it X feet this direction or that direction. So you do meet their site distance requirements.
So those decisions would fall on public?
Completely on Public Works. Yes.
Yeah. I, I think anywhere you're going, not, not every situation requires the same things. And so we have to be, have some flexibility there. It opened my eyes when I think the weeks we're putting in there and we wanted some things done to where it entered the, the public road. And every bid was $80,000. And I just thought this, this is totally unreasonable for a homeowner to have to do this type of stuff. So I think some of that stuff's being addressed, I'm hoping.
It is being addressed. And we're also looking at majority of when the homeowner gets pretty much dinged with it is when they're short plotting their property and it's up to the four lots. And that's when what we're trying to do is reduce, create another category that's lesser, lesser, like a lesser standard that keeps, still keeps the homeowner safe for the fire apparatus and the emergency vehicles, but yet still keeps the cost down. So they can still develop their property.
So last week when we met, it became clear, something that I like to advertise on, which is everything's a trade off. And for some reason or other, people have gotten into the notion that the government can handle 100% of all the cases. And if we were to run the county like that, we'd probably have to, we'd have to do something drastic and impossible. Well, this is just a reminder that we all, we address the major caseload impact. And the pathological cases are just a consequence. Thomas Sowell said there, there's something about, and they're only trade offs. So our job is not to favor that person or that person, but to do an aggregate view of how do we favor the county in general. And it's a little bit of a, of a guess sometimes, but you've got a lot of numbers. And so I'm happy with that.
Good. More to come on private roads, but July 18th, we're looking forward to seeing how the standards can help the developers a little more, look a little more doable for them. So we'll see what comes out of it.
So on July 18th, will there be a decision, an ordinance?
It'll be, hopefully, a recommendation can come forward to the board of what the developers and the constituents would like to see as an ordinance. And then we would, we would, through Public Works, between us, we would bring something forward.
And the sooner we resolve this, the sooner the public can understand.
For all of us, for all of us. Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
Yeah. And then the last thing we were going to speak with today or speak on was the nuisance abatement. So we've got Trevin here and I, I can move. And we can go through the numbers for, Trevin pulled our numbers for 2023 and also 2024, and then the total of them at the bottom of the combined years. So I just wanted to, the board had asked about nuisance abatement a couple of weeks ago. This is our first chance to meet with you again. So we thought we'd bring up the topic and see if you gentlemen had questions and kind of open the discussion.
I, I appreciate and also feel sorry for the, the work you have to do, because we get some of the calls. I, I'm making an assumption here, because of the calls we get is one neighbor not doing what another neighbor thinks they should do and they start getting into this clashes. Is that what you, you get time seen?
Uh, some of it, yes.
So that is always a, a difficult thing when neighbors can't figure it out amongst themselves.
You've been on the job, on that job now about a year?
Yes, a year on June 1st.
Any conclusions?
Love thy neighbor.
Well, I mean, are, do you feel that you're able to help? Are you, is there something we should do to help you? Any, I mean, it, it's like the chairman said, that's a pretty tough job, because you're going to displease somebody.
I, I went into it knowing you couldn't make everybody happy. One party or the other is going to be frustrated with the outcome. Honestly, it's been, I feel just us addressing the issue, even if it isn't the outcome that one party hopes is helpful. So being able to address it from a point of education, rather than like enforcement, is super helpful as well. So it seems that most are receptive to that.
Is there a, a place, you know, when I get a, a call from a neighbor, my first thought is, well, have they been through nuisance abatement? And if they have, they just didn't, and they didn't get a decision they wanted, then my conversation with them is different than, than if they, they have it. Is there an easy way for me to look up, do you, you know, for?
Oh, to see if I have, if our office has talked to me?
Yeah. If you've already, you know, dealt with it, then I can say, well, they've dealt with it and they've looked at things on a much deeper basis than I do.
Sure. Um, in the Acela program, we will input any requests we get that our office is able to address. So for instance,
Is it by like address?
It is by address, yes. And usually that'll all come up under its own special number for that project. For instance, like in last year, in 2023, from January 1st to December 31st, we received a total of 124 complaints or requests for investigation to our department. Thirty eight of those were something that our office had no authority over or would be referred to another department, such as like Environmental Health or Public Works, LNI, that kind of thing. Out of that, 124, 86 of them, we actually were able to investigate and look into and verify if there was something we could do. We were able to close 63 of those cases in total. Twelve of those were closed due to them applying for permits, because the project that they had were, needed to have a permit to do, such as building a barn or something along those lines. Fifty one of those were not a complaint or wasn't enough evidence to either go forward or wasn't a violation in that process. So if it's not something that our office would take in, we wouldn't enter it into that system. So out of the 38, you wouldn't have seen that. But the ones that we could do, most definitely.
You would, you would find it in there. But, but you would need an Acela account then, right?
No, you can actually search that right off the main website. So anytime a file is entered into a seller, punching in the address will pull it right up with or without an account.
Another thing I'd like to add to as well, this is Mike Wilson, Building Official. We are also in the process of creating a mapped version of this, so to speak, so that they, it's an overlay that'll be available in the mapping, so that they can identify these geographically. So you'll understand where they are. And keep in mind too, the, the numbers that were provided here is a raw numbers. They're not categorized in accordance with the priority that was established by the board several years ago. So Trevin's done a very good job in corralling these things. Because whereas the, the general public, you know, may find something unsatisfactory, their direction is to obtain a permit. That's, that's where we're trying to head them towards. And it doesn't make the, their problem go away. It just means that they obtain a permit. You know, good, bad, or indifferent from their perspective, you know, all we're seeking is for them to voluntarily comply with the requirements the state establishes. So anyway, more to come on that, the, the maps, you know, like I said, we're working on that. And hopefully that'll be a very effective overlay in the near future.
Do you handle anonymity? Pardon? Do you handle anonymity? I'm angry at my neighbor, but I don't want him to know it as I who called on him.
Yes, they, they can complete the form and request to be anonymous.
The way I usually do things is when I get a call, I typically just nod and then say, I'll look into it. And an email, they get to see it. And even though I made my livelihood in software, I garbage in, garbage out. uh, even though I made my livelihood in software, I garbage in, garbage out. And I don't mean in offense. I just know that there are time lags and then there are perspectives and I can't get that out of Excel is my guess. Be, which reminds me, these are all subject to PPRRs.
Yes. That's why a lot of people like to remain anonymous.
Yeah.
But it's hard for us to find the chick, the overlar- oversized chicken coop in somebody's backyard that only from the back of the neighbor's property can see.
It's a five acre lot and it's.
Yeah.
Coop right.
Yeah, it's tough sometimes.
Yeah.
Trevin's a great personality and a great employee for this particular role. He pulls people off the ledge and he's, he works with the customer quite well. So I'm very pleased to have him in this role.
And the first step, of course, is that Trevin verifies the facts as reported. It's not simply, we just, you know, pursue blindly. So we want to establish, is there any validity to the request for investigation to begin with? And so that's the first step he takes.
And how do you deal with the situation where one neighbor is angry at the other neighbor and the, the angry person notes that the, the neighbor built a shed that was beyond the, the, the size where it needs a permit? So do you force a permit or do you say, yeah, how do you handle it?
Well, the first thing is verify that what they claim to be true is actually true. Uh, and once that is established, then Trevin would approach them and, uh, inform them that a permit was necessary to do whatever it is that they did because it's not exempt from the code. The tact with which that's handled, um, Trevin's been doing a very good job with that. Um, oftentimes the, the people may be unaware. Um, they just believe that it's something or understood that it was something that didn't need a permit and, uh, they weren't necessarily going to take the word of their neighbor. Um, so, you know, life goes on. Um, and we've had some that have been somewhat contentious. Uh, but, uh, you know, Trevin does a good job of explaining their, you know, the reality of it.
I still want to know a very definitive answer. Trevin caught me with the building that was, should have been permitted in some way. What do you do about that?
Verify the, the facts?
No, assuming it's all verified. You have a case, black and white.
Request they get, they had paid a permit.
See, that's an issue I kind of have that, uh, I, I don't want to use building and planning as a uh, strong arm for someone's rivalry, if you will, or something like that. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and understood. I appreciate that. Um, you know, once discovery has been made, all we are doing is presenting them with the requirements the state sets forth.
And that, and it ends there?
Depending on the prioritization of the case, that may be it. Uh, we don't have the resources to pursue these things to the nth degree if the priority is such that something else is more important. They are informed, you know? And we often find that the marketplace brings these to our doorstep eventually. Uh, we have several cases of that where someone, we was informed a few years ago that a permit was necessary for whatever it is they built. And it was pursued, you know, to the diligence that we were capable of providing at the time. And it just languished there basically as a code enforcement issue until someone wanted to sell or someone wanted to buy. And they insisted on a certificate of occupancy, in which case they come again. And this time it takes very little discussion to direct them in the place they need to be.
Yeah. And I would agree with my colleague. I don't want to see, I think the tendency is to use building and planning as, as our police enforcement agency. And I don't, I don't want to see that, that either. You know, people are, human nature is funny. They, they want to be left alone and do what they want to do until somebody does something they don't like. And then we, they want us to fix it. And we're not here to, to be the police. We're here to give them good information.
I'm also thinking of all the legal, uh, again, if, if you were to file suit, slap a fine on and it goes on and on. And that's a lot of expense.
Exactly.
I like the final solution is you don't have a certificate of occupancy. And if I know that as the buyer, I may ignore it also, or I may say, that's fine.
Oh, there are cases out there where there were houses that were built entirely without permits and, uh, they were, you know, instructed of the requirements and they ignored it. And, uh, a cash buyer, you know, took it as is. I mean, that's their prerogative. Uh, so, um, that's why we, you know, once upon a time established the prioritization, there are, there are conditions that do need attention because it does present a danger, in which case those will be pursued with, you know, uh, greater, uh, you know, emphasis. Uh, but the lower priority projects, I mean, we have to look at it, what is the harm to the general public?
Right. In this room, we've had several angry people come and complain about issues. Uh, you've tried to address them here. They seem like they boil in the background. How many of those do you have? And I, I, I don't want to reopen up a discussion on any of them, one in particular. I just know that we haven't heard the end of it.
There's two that come to mind.
To be a part.
There's two current ones that come to mind. One of them was a current email that I believe the board was, or CC'd on, even just this last week. There's, there's not a lot our department can do. I mean, the trailer's on wheels. It's not connected to anything that affects our department. It's not in our jur-, I mean, it's our jurisdiction, but it's not in the county right away. I mean, there's so many factors that are not favorable to get that thing removed. We're trying, but I don't know what else. I don't know what other resources to offer that person.
Yeah, well.
And we're sorry for their frustration. I mean, I, I can only imagine. You know, when you live in a, and you live in you, that's your investment, that's your home. You want to live in a nice neighborhood and environment, but we do what we can.
I, I'm not an attorney, but that almost feels like it. Where do you, where's the line crossed where it's really a civil matter versus a code matter?
Yep. And there's no code that helps us for that one. So it is pretty much at this point a civil matter.
Code, even the civil matter gets tenuous. Uh, you.
Yes.
You get a bad neighbor and I'm not sure there's anything you can do about it.
You're right. Can only fence in yourself from a neighbor for so long.
And the danger of using us for your bad neighbor is that all of a sudden we have the KGB.
We do try to get, do those.
So those two that we mentioned, how do the, uh, what's where, which, in which line do I find them tallied?
On the report?
Yeah.
So if it's what I've compiled is just what we've received, what we've closed and what we've referred others, currently active, I only have fifty-four active.
No, I meant those specific ones. What number, what I look at there, they're two out of one twenty-four, two out of thirty-eight, two out of sixty-three.
Oh, on the Acela?
Two out of fifty-four.
Two out of fifty-four.
They're just active. Yep.
Yep, two out of fifty-four.
Yeah.
Right there.
That's the total for the two years. Yeah.
Right. And the case of those that were, um, as Tracy described, where there is nothing under our authority, they'd be, they'd be considered closed. Um, although they would like them to be open, but as we explain to them, you don't really want the government inserting yourselves into a position as you're describing, solving matters between neighbors.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate the work you do, young man. I don't, I don't think it's an easy job. I, I, I like the periodic updates. I, I, uh, cause I don't want to get to a point where we, he gets over, we get overwhelmed in that position and we don't do something about it. Because when people get overwhelmed, then they just walk out.
Yeah, that's a good segue to a reminder. If there's something you need us to do to help.
No, just be supportive of what you've been. We appreciate all the support so far. So.
Well, except for that.
No, forget that then.
Yeah. Geez, now you're asking for the.
I know. Thanks, guys. That's all we had this morning. We know you had a full morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I see finance. We're going to do budget review on the finance lady? Okay. Saving paper. Is that because our sales tax revenue is down?
Mr. Chairman, are you old enough to remember before electronic calculators or mechanical calculators? Little wheels spun and all that?
No.
Oh.
I don't think I recall that.
You missed something.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Okay, we're gonna, Kathy Funt Baxter, Finance Director. We're gonna talk about the sales tax. Um, I'm gonna give you an update every month on where we're at in sales tax. Um, so this is our comparison month by month compared to prior year. The good news is, I mean, even though I see red numbers there, the good news is that, um, the actual difference between this time and last year, for example, on March, it's a difference of about twenty-four thousand dollars. So, um, the first two months were much more significant declines over prior year. Um, I pretty much have pointed, pinpointed that out to be related to construction and I sent some information to you earlier. Um, and so year to date, we're off on sales tax revenue compared to this time last year, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, almost three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, I've looked at if we continued on the trend that using March as an indicator, um, that would be an additional three hundred and, um, twenty thousand dollars approximately. So.
You're saying three percent for the remainder of the year?
For the remainder of the year. So a total, you know, if I'm looking at this and I'm trying to be um, somewhat pessimistic or optimistic, optimistic really is that, um, you know, maybe we're looking at as much as, you know, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, something like that in that range. So, um, that, anyway, so I'm not, I'm, I'm much more pleased than I was last month and seeing, you know, a twenty-five percent decline um, was alarming. Um, but I'm much more pleased at seeing a three percent off from last year. Um, I think we'll still make our, make, we'll be close to making budget, um, in the realm of looking at things. So anyway, I'm, I'm much more optimistic. So I have another, um, a presentation that Bailey, can you bring up the PDF? So I want to look at general fund overall. I have some financials for you. Doing the same format we've been doing for departments. I'll wait for a moment till she gets, and I, I gave you a handout as well, but and we pulled, we pulled all of our financial data, um, a few weeks ago. So we're using that same data set. Um, I'll, I'll update this data set again, um, for, to try to catch last, last minute entries that were for the month of May. Um, but when I look at comparison of where we're at to last year at the same time, um, on our taxes, of course, we're, our current year actuals are down a little bit over what we were this same time period last year. Um, but when I look at the other sources of our revenues, we're pretty much on track. Um, as far as comparing ourselves to last year at the same point in time. Um, miscellaneous, we're off a little bit. Uh, I'll probably look into that. Um, but on our intergovernmental, um, we're actually right on track. Goods and services, we're just a little bit better than last year, um, on the revenue side. Um, same thing for fines and penalties, just a little bit better than last year. So really the only area of concern that I have on the revenue is our, our sales tax, um, collections. And I'll be digging into that a little bit more, but, um, anecdotally, we've, um, heard from some different, um, counties, we contacted some of their budget offices and some were reporting a decline. They're seeing declines like we are and some were reporting um, stable, um, and on track. So it was, it's kind of all over the place. So. So I'm not extremely alarmed on our revenue side. On our expenditure side, the good news is, um, unpaid, that's the next page, Bailey. Oops. Sorry. That's okay. On our expenditure side, um, of course, we have our target of where we would be based upon, um, the number of months and we're pretty much on track on our expenditures person, the major categories personnel. Um, current year actuals is about fourteen point six. Um, I think that number's a little shy because it doesn't include the last payroll yet for the month of May, which just posted. And so that's why I want to update my numbers again. But I think we're on track with where we were at for last year. Um, we're actually lower on supplies than we were last year at the same time. We're actually lower on services than we were this time period last year. Um, the other ones are not material, the other expenditure areas, but so, um, we pretty much have favorable variances comparing ourselves to this time last year. Um, personnel, which is one of our largest expenses, um, we act sure below, um, the target for the number of months or five months. So, um, I'm, I'm not seeing anything alarming on our expenditure side either. So that, that made me, um, also
Yeah.
more optimist, more optimistic about our, our budget process and how it's working.
Cause whatever we're, we're down, if I'm reading this, fifty-seven. Whatever we're down in, in tax receipts, we've pretty much made up for in.
Right.
Expense.
In person, pretty much in personnel. Yeah. Um, and the other thing is that when I look at the revenues, what I budgeted for revenues, for, for example, in taxes is thirty-two, thirty-two million. We actually achieved last year in grand total thirty-three point seven. So about a million, um, we're, we budgeted about a million dollars less than what we had last year. So, and taxes.
I knew we, we felt that might ease off some.
Yeah. So, so.
The first two months just kind of caught us by surprise.
Yeah, they, they caught me and I was concerned, but I'm, my concern has, um, I still have concern, but it's not as great as it was when I was looking at the numbers for January and February.
So the, the capital line needs a little interpretation on the, uh, expense side?
Yeah. So, um, so I'm going to go back and look at that. I think that has to do with adjustments, uh, that were made for prior year and they show up as a negative expense when, when they're posted this year. So I'm going to look at that. I don't know why I have a negative capital actuals. Um.
That's like a mark to market.
Yeah. I don't, and yeah, I don't.
Makes sense.
No, it doesn't make sense. So I'm going to look at that one a little bit more. Um, and the same thing for debt. I haven't, you'll notice I have a negative number in debt for current year actuals year to date. So I think those are some reclassifications that were made. And so I'm going to look at that.
If I look at the debt service, does that include the bond payment?
Yes. And what's deceiving about. Yes. And what's deceiving about this one is we are no longer recording, um, uh, the debt service, I think on that, um, that water, um, I can't remember which one, what it was, but it flowed through our books, but it really was, um, and we were paying the debt for.
Oh, uh, for the three.
Three rivers. I was gonna say it starts with a T, three rivers. Yeah. So I'm, I'm going to look to see if that might be part of my reason.
And, uh, that's the principal interest in that, in, in that line?
Yes, yes, both. There's still some po, there's still positive news coming out of the economic, um, indicators as well. So it just take longer time to trickle down to, to our area.
I don't know. A couple of us are losing our jobs soon.
Oh. I'm sure you're going to have more, more jobs than you can imagine.
They'll probably want to put in for unemployment. I ain't signing that.
Yeah. Denied. Are there any other questions?
No, I, I don't. I, I appreciate the updates. I mean, I'm like you, I'm, I'm a little bit relieved to see tax receipts kind of bounce back.
Yeah. I'm hoping I get, I'm hoping I don't see. Yeah, I hope I don't keep seeing red. I hope we get back to black. But, but I'm, I am pleased and I'm going to keep monitoring and, um, keep informing you about these. I didn't have the recording revenues, um, normally I report that, but I, I didn't have a chance last week. We were kind of busy and shorthanded a little bit. And so I didn't get that from the auditor's office, but I'll, I'll make sure that I get that updated as well. Doc fee, undocumented recording fees.
Yeah. How are your plans to shift the investment pool into Bitcoin? Okay.
I, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I said on that committee, that's not going anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we have a finance committee. I don't, and I don't think it's on one of the, um, allowable investments list either.
Yeah. Probably not now, but I, it's central bank digital currency. Pretty scary.
Yeah. And, and so we are still, I mean, talking about investment income, we are still seeing, um, investment income uh, at a higher rate than what, what we have budgeted. So that's a positive. And it was a little over what the last finance committee means, a little over 5%.
That's probably a consequence of the inflation not going down. So the interest rates.
Staying, stay up, stable.
Yeah. So I think no matter how we look at it, it's, at best, we're floating.
So I do think the firm we're using, being at their full-time job, seemed to be doing a pretty good job of keeping us on top of things.
Kind of makes you ask, what was the matter with us the previous years?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. In miscellaneous, before we head into agenda item review, since I see people here. I see one person here.
Uh, did, on miscellaneous items, uh, did you have any thoughts on, uh, the, on the Board of Health?
Board of Health? Have, I, I haven't, have we received any more applications this last week?
Have we?
I don't know. I say, I have two.
Right.
So do, do these, um, excuse me for not looking through, but I know I can kind of guess from the application, the slot there, they, they're, they're set to fill.
Yeah. Those, those slots aren't quite black and white slots. So I, I, uh, I think Kelly, the clerk of the board, has that all worked out. So, uh, it's, it's some point we have to close the door on applications and, uh, make a decision.
I, I think the, if you, if you're just looking for my personal opinion, I think the first time, time around when we get to applications and we just treat it like, like when we're filling other and if we get.
That's the way.
Animus or two, two thirds, then that person will fill that, that position.
Yeah, that's the way I look.
I think the first time going through interviews, it was brand new, but we've kind of got history and we kind of know what we expect those people to do in those slots now. And so I'm, I'm comfortable doing that if you, if you are.
Yeah. Do we do that? Uh, now we've typically done that kind of after the fact, in the sense that, uh, you'll see it under consent agenda. So and so has been appointed, so and so has been appointed. I'm okay with that. If that's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, so we have to look at it and see if there's any contention and.
Yeah.
And work that with the clerk. I'm good with that.
Okay. The last time we talked, I, I'm not ignoring Commissioner Weber. I, I don't think he had any great heartburn with any of.
He didn't.
That, that either. So. Anything else? Kim, do you want to cover your stuff? I don't, I can, I can hold you there till, till 10:00 if you want, or you can cover yourself.
Good morning. Kim Boket with, um, today I'm representing Calhoun County Tourism. On the agenda tomorrow for you guys, I have, um, a contract with the Luluska Foundation. It's their grant funding, uh, for their ceremonial house restoration project in the amount of $42,000 that the LTAC granted.
That came out of LTAC, right?
Correct. Was there any questions on that?
I'm thinking.
I, I, I still think her dad owes me an apology for scaring the bejesus out of him.
Um, actually, you know, this is one of the, the projects, they do a great job with their grant application. And just to embellish a little bit about what they're doing, um, they are, this, this funding is for the final exterior portion of their old ceremonial house restoration project, the carving of a new front entry totem pole. So that's, that's what this funding is for. And, and, um, their application goes really deep into what they do. Um, to address some of, um, Commissioner Mortenson's concerns about economic impact, they do a great job. So I'm going to forward this to you because I think it's great reading. I wish I would have, um, brought a copy for you today, but I'm going to forward you their application because I think they do a great job in their, just in the application process of explaining their entire project, how it impacts what they're doing up there, but also how it impacts Calhoun County Tourism and how they are trying to, um, bring people back. And they're all.
Bring people back.
Back to Calhoun County.
From, from a COVID downturn or?
No, um, so they get people that stop in, um, like hikers and, and, you know, there's people that kind of happen upon them. And so then they keep track of, uh, so right now they're in this restoration project so that they're, as an example, they're keeping track of everybody that stops in right now. And they're keeping them updated on the restoration project so that they hopefully will come back and experience, um, this exhibit once it's completed. And trying to keep people coming back to Calhoun County over and over again. They get some of the tour groups up there from American Cruise Lines out of Kalama and they're doing the same thing with those, those folks saying, hey, you know, you're from Tennessee and you're here just because you signed up for this, this tour, but please come back. We'll be done with this project in 2025. We'd love to see you. So they're, they're doing a great job of capturing the people that are coming to them that, I guess, the accidental tourist and, and keeping them coming back. So, um, they're, they're impressive with what they're doing up there.
My guess is it probably increased a little bit. I think when they restored the pole that the chief did in the sixties and it sits down in the public market, you get a lot of people, I think that, I'm just guessing that look that over and, and get the name and then they drive up there and they see Luluska. They probably, I mean, if you haven't ever taken the time and gone in and, and seen their stuff, I think it's, it's worthwhile, whether you're of the Indian culture or you just want to know more about it.
It is quite interesting. So this, this poll, just to give you some idea, um, says the final piece of the exterior restoration, the carving of the front entry totem pole will begin in, as soon as funds are available. The log estimated at being over 1,200 years old has been donated by RSG Forest Products and was delivered by the Port of Kalama. It sits outside our museum along Highway 503, visible from the highway. The carving of the totem pole can be completed by December of 2024. So the log can then dry before painting and then be raised in front of the old house. And so as they're carving it, then that will be a tourist, tourist attraction as well.
It was kind of nice having the tall, uh, totem pole at the, at the Port of Kalama.
Yeah.
I kind of hate seeing it lying down, but.
I agree. I agree.
I'm surprised, actually.
Isn't strong enough to structure in the.
Except you can, uh, you can put, well, it, it may be difficult, but you can, uh, infuse it with, uh, with plastic.
Yeah.
On the inside and it would be very strong.
They, when, when you read about it in there, and I can't remember how much they use, but they.
They've already done that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, uh, because it's indoors now, it, it'll last a bit longer.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And it might've been a case where the public market really wanted it in there. I don't know.
Yeah. Did, uh, did the cruise line increase its stopping, it stops in Kalama?
Um, yes, actually I just looked at our tour numbers, our tour group numbers at the Silver Lake Visitor Center. And last year, year to date, uh, through May, we had 42 or 43 tours, tour groups.
That's their number.
This year, year to date, we've had 76.
Wow.
So definitely an increase. Um, talking with one of the tour operators, I might've mentioned this before, but the American Queen was, went bankrupt, um, right before the season started, which was another cruise line that came up on, it was a paddle boat. And American Cruise Lines bought their ship, but have not used it yet. I guess there's a lot of repairs that need to be done to that ship. Um, but they have absorbed their, their passengers. So, um, they are very, very busy. Which is great news because with Johnston Ridge being closed, trails being closed, um, the, um, the message to the public is Mount St. Helens is closed. So we're trying to change that messaging that Mount St. Helens is still open, that there's just a few things that are closed, but the rest of the, the organization or not the organization, but the rest of the monument is open. And things like Luluska Foundation on SR 503 is giving people things to do while they're here. And that's what we need.
My guess, it's always hard to, uh, figure out where tourism dollars should go. We could advertise, but I don't know, you, you've been doing advertising for years and years. Uh, do you have a good feel for how that plays out?
Actually, um, so we're trying a couple of new things, uh, with geo fencing, and there's another term that I'm not remembering right now, but it's basically the digital targeting. We're updating our website, um, for the visitor experience with visit, visit widget. Um, and we're just finalizing that. So we'll have some kiosks placed throughout the county. So when people get here, they know what to do to keep them here. But definitely the, the model has changed from, you know, years ago, we advertised in every airline magazine we could get our hands on or that we could afford. Uh, we still advertise in USA Today. But yes, it's ever-changing. And what, what does that look like? How do we, how are we getting people here? And then once they get here, what's there to do?
Did you have anything in the airport?
Yes.
Inner hallways?
Yep. Concourse, sea.
Concourses.
Yes.
Is it still there now?
Yep.
That just, that popped into my mind too, because I know a lot of people fly in. We have an airport, people fly in and, and then do things out of, so.
Yep. We are in the airports. Um, we participated in a billboard program called Blip. And that's like a digital billboard that they, they kind of cir.
Yeah.
Circulate different ads. So we, we participate in that.
And, uh, speaking of airport, do, do we do anything with the, with the Kelso Airport?
We don't.
I know Kelso Airport, we, we approved and became member of the passport. It's where, uh, it's like you get a passport to visit the national parks. Get a passport to visit the airports. And that turned out to be, I think, a pretty reasonable in, in investment. It wasn't that expensive, but uh, along, um, those lines I think are, it's a little more of an airport issue, but when, when you, you go to a, an airport like that, it's pretty stark. There, you know, where do you go to get a, a meal if you're just stopping over? No place and so forth. That's an area that they might use some of your expertise on what could be done.
I just made myself a note. I'm going to, I'll reach out to the.
Yeah. You know, that's a good point because you, you, you think of, uh, the ships coming into the Kalama port and they can catch a bus, they can go up and look at Luluska's stuff, or they can go up to the mountain, or they could do whatever. Well, if somebody comes in an airport, they don't really, if I want to go down and have lunch at minimums, or I want to go down and see the public market, or I want to see the mountain, there's no, there, I, I'm not aware of any access for them to do that. And I don't even know if that's a big deal, but.
It might be though. I mean, because we don't really have a large Uber or Lyft.
Yeah.
Um, presence in our areas. So transportation or the availability of, so, uh, let me reach out to over there and see kind of what they're currently doing and how we might be able to.
Yeah. Like, I don't know if it's a, it's a big need, but it seems like it.
It's one of those things I think that if it became uh, available, it would get used in increasing amounts, but in the beginning it's not going to be break even.
Right.
Uh, car rental agencies, do we have any in town? We used to.
We do. We have Enterprise that's over by the PUD.
Yeah. Is that the only one?
I think so.
Yeah.
That's the one that I'm familiar with.
Cause, cause I, I do know that people that fly, they belong to clubs and they do fly-ins to places for lunch, or they do for specific things and, and it could attract some of those if we actually had access out of our airport to, to do some of that.
Well, I think anything we can do to welcome people when they come to our community, for whatever reason, it, it, if they have a good experience, they're going to come back.
Yeah. Well, something to just look at, I guess.
Yeah, definitely. Any questions on my consent agenda item?
If, uh, we wanted to book, uh, an event that, that the center in the middle of July, is there availability? It's my off-handed way of saying, are you booked full, full time?
Uh, we're not booked full time. Uh, June is a slower month as people are transitioning from business meetings to, you know, vacationing and, um, summer is typically our slowest three, June, July and August are our three slower months of the year. Um, which is nice because our staff is, um, shifting into almost full-time fair mode because we produce the county fair. So the last two weeks of July, the event center is closed to events um, in preparation for that. And then we open right back up the first of August. But the first couple of weeks of July, we do have several meetings and things going on. So, um, but yeah, that business transitions from business to, we get into high school reunions, um, weddings. This past weekend, we hosted, uh, the Northwest Regional Hereford Show in our outdoor, or excuse me, in our indoor arena. And we also had the, um, Kelso High School 2024 Drug and Alcohol Free Grad Party on Saturday night. So.
And how are you doing with your RV park?
We're slowly moving forward.
Slowly is the key word.
Slowly is the key word.
And, uh, um, what's the other thing we, uh, oh, tell us how, how our, how is the negotiation on the fair going all completed?
What's that?
The negotiations for the fair, you, you've got everybody identified and. The negotiations for the fair, you, you've got everybody identified and under contract?
Uh, the fair, yes. All of our contracts, as far as we have our, um, ticket takers and sellers, we use, uh, Kellis County Search and Rescue for that. Um, our sheriff's reserves, provider of security. Um, our stock contractor, I believe for the rodeo, this is his last year of the contract. So we'll go out to bid this year for the next couple of years. Our carnival provider, I believe this may be her last year, um, under contract. So we'll be going out to bid for that also at the end of this year. Um, but yes, for the twenty twenty four fair, we're, we're rolling right ahead.
So in terms of tourism dollars, do we do anything for the rodeo?
We don't. Um, the, the tourism dollars, we do have forty five thousand dollars from the lodging tax funds that do go to the events or to the expo center, um, that do help with improvements and repairs and maintenance.
What kind of prize money is there for the rodeo?
Um, so there's, we add, um, the added money for the rodeo, which is what we provide is eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, that's.
For all prizes?
For all prizes. And then they also, as people enter the rodeo, some of that money goes towards the prize money also.
What happens if you multiply that number by two?
As far as, um, getting more contestants?
Yeah, and more, more people showing up?
Um, in the past, we added more money. We were part of a different association and adding more money in that association. Um, we were still kind of a small fish in a big pond. Um, with the current association that we belong to, um, and the current prize money that we have, we're, we're towards the top of that association as far as prize money. Um, it definitely does make a difference when you offer a little bit more, it, it may bring a few more people in. Our contestant numbers, when we switched associations about oh, eight years ago, uh, our contestant numbers tripled. So, um, it was a good move to, to move to that association. So we're looking forward to, to a good rodeo season, hoping that gas prices are down, people can afford to travel and will come visit us.
Big trucks, big trailers.
Big trucks, big trailers.
How are you doing with AI horses and, uh, Brama bulls?
What's that? How are we doing with those?
Yeah. Mechanical bulls, but that appear like they're real.
Oh, right. Let's, let's not go into AI.
Tough way to make a living.
We're trying to give people like real life experiences. For those people to come out of their basements, get away from the TV and computer and come live, live a little.
Anything you need from us?
Not at this time. I appreciate it. I seem to be seeing you guys a lot, so maybe I'll see you next week. I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. So, Susan?
Inside that handbag, you've got hammers, nails and.
Pardon me?
Box wrenches and all that.
For handouts?
In your handbag.
Oh, no.
That's an engineer's tool belt.
Yeah, there's a calculator, um.
Loctite? Which is the lot, is there loctite blue is for a permanent or that's just for picking the slop up out of the threads?
Do you, do I, you think I'm out in the field knowing which is which?
Okay.
My husband probably could tell you. He doesn't let me use tools. It's actually kind of amusing.
Well, I remember the picture of you holding the bolt that sheared off the.
Oh, yeah. All right. Good morning. Let's see, what do we have on the agenda this week? So in the consent agenda, we have a, uh, warranty deed for South Cloverdale. I believe this one, sat, um, before it was recorded, uh, so that we could process the payment. So this is just, uh, closing the loop paperwork. Then we have amendment number one to the professional services agreement with engineering, in energy nearing solutions. Uh, they are one of our consultants up at the landfill and this just extends the term of the agreement through the end of this year. So they can finish out the gas items that they are working on for us. Uh, we have a contract completion letter to Queeg Brothers for the Ostrander Road Culvert Replacement Project. So that was the, uh, triple box that we replaced and finished up this winter. So they have all their paperwork in, so we're getting that completed out. We have contract execution with pile contractors for the Hazel Dell Slide Repair Project. Uh, we awarded this about three weeks ago. Uh, this is a slip out into Leckler Creek, um, on Hazel Dell Road where we're replacing our temporary, um, ultra block wall with a permanent soldier pile wall with tiebacks. And that was our consent items. And on our motion items, we have the resolution for the Burma Road Toodle Park Bypass Project for Engineering and Construction for the amount of seven hundred ninety thousand dollars. So that's to establish the project, get it rolling. Um, we are going to try. I remember, if you guys remember about six months ago, we came forward with the UAV contract for survey services. Um, because this is a new corridor, we are going to, um, use them this time to see how the surveying goes. So, um, and we're reaching out to the neighbors and letting them know that we're going to be out there relatively soon. I have a, a task proposal that I will issue as soon as we get this established.
You're hoping they'll keep their shotguns in abeyance?
Yes, we, we, that, we want to let them know that it's the county out there. We're not taking pictures in your windows. We're just flying the property line, collecting lidar data. So the right of way agents are reaching out to the neighbors and warehouse or to let them know.
How are you doing that with, uh, snail mail?
I'm sorry, with what?
Are you using the US mail and sending them a notice?
Oh, no, we go, we use the telephone and knocking on doors, um, just to make sure that they're, they truly are contacted.
Yeah.
I'm hoping you don't get too much resistance there. I hope they understand that we're trying to make sure they have access in case we lose to the road.
Yes.
Yeah.
That the consequences of us not being out there are going to be far worse.
I, I hope so. We, we'll, we'll see what happens.
I don't think there'll be any problems, actually. That's pretty quick.
I know.
I mean, Quick Brothers, right?
Yeah, it was Quig Brothers.
A quig.
Quig.
Speaking of names, that pile of contractors, that's not such a good name.
Except they drive piles, that they build pile walls.
Alternate English definition of pile.
Yeah.
We all know that, right? No? It's just you and I.
Okay.
Our secret.
Nothing else? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, have we saved up all our nasty questions? So we're about set to unleash them?
I think so.
Okay.
I thought you wanted me to come in every week like I have been lately. So I am just here to, um, give you information on what we have going on, um, in District Court. What we've been working on for the last six months or so. Um, doesn't really involve you at this point, but it will at, at, in the future. So I thought it was a good time to give you a little update. As you may or may not know, um, we use a separate document management system from everyone else in the county at this point. The on-base program, Image Soft. We would like to replace that and we've been working on looking for a replacement, um, since the beginning of the year. Um, and, and we did find what we think is a really great solution. Um, it's called O Court. It's used by forty other courts in the county. Unfortunately, we were a victim of timing. Excuse me, this got developed right at the same time we developed our Image Soft program. So it wasn't something that was available when we made that original purchase. It's a document library and scheduling software that goes with the court case management that we use. AOC JIS program that's going to be switching to Enterprise Justice, which is a version of Odyssey, all these names going around in the next few years. They've, they've started implementing that at the district court level. This year, we're slated in the next few years to get that. This is the only software program that is approved by the state to integrate with that. It's going to be the only one. And the implementation of the software is actually less expensive than our annual software maintenance on what we're doing now. And the yearly maintenance is about a quarter of what we're doing now.
When you say implementation, you mean the, the upfront cost plus the installation cost?
Correct.
Plus the first year's maintenance?
Yes. Yes. So right now, well, that's what got me looking at this. Uh, not that we're real thrilled with the Image Soft solution anyway, but they did increase our maintenance fees last year. Um, and for no good reason, frankly. Um, and so we started looking at other things. So they want to charge us about seventy thousand dollars yearly. And this is, eh, if we get everything, you know, it has a few different modules, but what we're thinking we want is about forty thousand for implementation and then ten for the yearly. It works with Laserfish. So that, that's a big part of the cost drop is that we will be using the program that everyone else is in the county is using for the document storage end of it. So, um, we've been working with IT since the beginning on this, about February, they went up to view the product and have been talking with the different IT people at the different courts and believe that there's nothing odd or unusual or difficult about making this switch. The Image Soft contract is actually your contract, because if you remember, and I don't know if you were here when that all got signed, it was a joint, joint between us and the prosecutor's office. It wasn't just a court contract. So therefore the commissioner signed that contract. So in a few months, I will be bugging you to, to work on terminating that, which I've already been working with Doug to make sure we know everything we need to do in order to get out of that, which is just thirty days notice. So our goal is we can get this implemented here in the next few months. We were paid through maintenance through the year with, with our on-base Image Soft solution. We can just be done with it at the end of the year and let it die. We will move on to bigger and better things.
Do you have that?
It's actually smaller, but.
Do you have that plan, uh, written up in, uh, bullet succinct form we could look at?
I can. I have my notes for me, but yeah, I can get that for you, let you know exactly what.
Cause in, I often stumbled across, uh, things that are comparing apples to oranges. And then there's also the one where, well, we didn't tell you, but you're going to have to hire another, another person and.
This really is a smaller solution. Image Soft on base, like I use both names, just Image Soft is the company, but on base is the, the product is a huge unwieldy monster that we have, that we only use certain parts of it because it's not as efficient as it could be to use in court. It doesn't create documents for us quickly that are usable. All the things that were promised or, or don't work nearly as well as they should. This is a web-based, smaller scale system that will, it does fewer things, but the things it does, it does more efficiently. And so we're, we're scaling back, but getting more use out of, of, out of the product. And it also is helpful for the legal community because it's web-based, they can have sign-ins to it. The documents like guilty plea forms and those kinds of things can be worked from in the program. Kind of in real time. So our lawyers will be able to log in, use the program. The judge can see who's, who's got it at any given moment and then it's ready to go. We just need signature pads in order to sign things in court, which we already have. So yes, I, I can get you more information on it, but it is.
When I see web-based.
The document library is web-based and then everything goes, but our, it in product goes into Laserfish, will be housed here onsite.
Yeah, I, anything that's out in the cloud actually puts you exposed more than if you kept it in, inside. And in the legal community, I would think that's important.
And, um, Doug has looked over the contract and the information and he's actually got some addendums to it that he's adding. So we're not finalized on that. There, there are things that some other courts have, have included in their contracts to try to make things a little bit tighter. So.
And another thing is when you get a software package, they, they have metadata that helps them do their job. But typically that can be, that has been used as blackmailing you into, you gotta buy our product, otherwise you lose all this information. So, uh, that's something I would want, I, maybe true Travis to look at. It's really.
And he had, he's been in on the emails with the contracts going back and forth. So I have no concerns have been voiced to me at this point from the IT end.
It'll remind me to ask Travis about that because we, we get burned all the time when they have proprietary storage of information, but it's your data.
It is.
But you can't have it because you didn't buy the program. Don't like that.
Like I said, though, there isn't much actually stored in this. It's kind of, you use it in real time and then everything moves to Laserfish for our, our final storage. We're not counting on it to, to hold our documents for us.
Yeah, and there's encryption and all that you, that you look at. Now that's, that's a, the, the package you're thinking of buying for them, that's a, a total cost for any number of users?
Yes, just, it's just, we can give as many people as we want logins to it. There's no licensing involved.
So IT would be administering an account on that software?
We, the court will handle that part. There's, it, it's easy to set up users and logins. They won't have to manage that part at all. Their involvement really is just the Laserfish end, which they've already started building our folders for us, um, to house the documents once, once they've moved in there. And, and yeah, the transition between the two programs into Laserfish is really more their IT's end of it.
Uh, yeah. IT is experienced with lots of scams and lots of things and it would, I'm not saying they should have control. You having control is fine, but if there's an administrator on your side, it may pay for them to ask IT. So what kind of problems do you see when you're creating an account?
Right. And like I said, we've had good contact with that handful of the other courts that have been using this for a decade or so. So no real red flags have come up at this point. And that's really all, you know, I'm not an IT expert, but I have involved them from the beginning, just to make sure it's, it's an appropriate solution for us.
And these, this software is used in how many other places, you said?
Forty jurisdictions in Washington State. It was developed in two thousand and thirteen, which is exactly when we were looking at the, the on-base solution. So, um, unfortunately, it wasn't really a big thing out there at the time when we were, were looking. But now it is. And like I said, it's the only one that the state is going to allow to work with the new case management system that we're moving to.
Run that by again, the state is going to say.
Yes. So if, if we schedule something in this program, it will update our state case management system for us. They've, they're allowing that kind of integration. That's there now.
I know.
So, so.
They're not telling you that you have to use this. They're not telling you that you have to use this package. They're saying if you use this package, you get this.
Correct. That it, no, they're not telling us, but. It is on base is pretty much going to be useful or useless to us, except for holding our documents here in a few years. This will, this will be a great help to us to have at a lower cost.
So you're going to, so the uh, an an argument is it's gonna be cheaper because the out-of-pocket costs are are gonna be less.
And it it's just, it's the smaller scale product, so it. I don't even know how to describe it, but the on the on-base product we have is this giant set of workflows.
No, no, let's not go over there. I'm just saying tomorrow or tomorrow to continue operating the way we are now, you're gonna have to fork over seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so you're looking at this and saying it's gonna save, I I only have to fork over almost just a little over half of that. And the following year, it's gonna be.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand compared to?
Seventy.
To seventy each year. Okay, so just just one rationale is it's just plain cheaper. And it does fit everything else of recommendation. And you use the term if more efficient and this and that. How do I know that? How how will I see that in hindsight? Will you come to us and say we've processed more cases? We've had fewer errors or? Hard to say you've had.
We will take less steps in order to schedule a case. So I I can't know right off hand how that'll translate into, you know, affecting our workday. But I do know we will, we will do less steps in order to get the same thing that.
Right. And I'm saying that has to manifest itself in the long term with a a higher throughput in the office, getting more work done. And so I'm encouraging you to keep enough. Data so you can convince yourself whether you made the right choice or not.
Yes. I agree.
Okay. The counter to that, of course, is if we spend less here, but we spend more in the office. And so I'm just trying to be sure.
Right. And that is always a can a concern. I'm not seeing anything in this that leads us to do any more work, only less work than we're doing now. So. So so in the coming months, we'll be Doug will be coming to you or however that needs to work to get your signature on the the termination of the on-base contract.
But in a year and a half, you'll be able to. Tell the chairman that, in fact, we save five percent of our staff.
And a lot, the savings is going to be from the prosecutor and the Office of Public Defense also in. I, you know, you'd have to talk to them on how that would translate to work. But being able to work those certain plea forms in real time electronically versus passing the paper back and forth between the offices, I think will be much more efficient for them also.
How different are you from what we bought for? For the PA's office?
Pretty different. Yeah.
Because you're the 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 needs are totally different. I mean, they have to interface to OPD also, and you do too, right?
We don't. They, this will allow them to be working on a document that ultimately will be filed with us from within our system.
Oh, so and so a lawyer for OPD will have an account on this?
Yes. Yeah.
That's nice simplicity.
It's what we're trying for here. So.
Oh, here comes some tough questions.
Can I ask a question? If it's web-based, is it solely web-based? And if the web goes down, does court stop?
Court would not stop. We would still have our case management system and we would still have Laserfish um, access to the documents that are already in the file. We would just have to work in a little more old-fashioned way way while the web was down. And then.
You would still have backup somewhere in-house that you can work from?
Yes.
Okay.
So that that's a good question. So if the web is down, you still have your data onsite?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we would just have to pull out a paper form like we do now and and do it that way. And we would scan it later. And then once the web was back up, we could start up again.
But pulling out a paper form isn't gonna solve the problem. He's looking at, I'm working on case bloody blah, and the web went down. Do I still have that case?
Yes, because that the case management is in a completely different system. This is document management and the two work together. But.
So Laserfish is the repository of the data?
Yes. So the day and and the AOC court case management system, which is not, you know, if the computer goes down, we got problems there, but that that isn't housed with this program at all. So.
I thought the one of the things I understood was that this would eliminate a lot of paperwork between agencies. And and but at the same time, if all that's stored electronically and and the web goes down, how are you got a paper document to pull out?
Well, they would have the like they do now. They they would get the paper, have them stored in their office to fill out the old-fashioned way. That's what that's what everyone has now. So that, you know, that's a if they're getting those offline off the state system and the web's down, they do the same thing they're doing now when that happens. It this program won't make that better or worse than it is right now, I guess. That makes sense.
Okay, I guess I can't. If you're in the middle of a big trial and an attorney is sitting there with an electronic device and all of a sudden it goes away.
This isn't really for that. This is for the day-to-day criminal dockets where you're doing a plea form. Not doing a big back and forth case. This really wouldn't be used utilized for that. That would be the state case management that would come in handy more for that than this program. This program's a document library of court forms that you will be filing with the court, but you don't use those during the course of a trial too much. So.
Right. So no get out of jail free cards if the web goes down?
No, we figure out a way to make things work. So any other questions? All right. So I'll I'll be back.
We had them all saved up for you.
Okay, we'll do, and I will get you a little summary.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Think we are expecting Jessica at eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to try and get her early if we can?
Up to you. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You want to have a call just if if she's available. If not, we'll just recess. But if she's available. Looking through upcoming events, uh, this Wednesday, Animal Control Code. I'm kind of interested in hearing that because I know when I talked to. Chi Puda and stuff, there's. There's some growing pains with with some of that. So.
I haven't heard any, yeah.
I'll be interested hearing that. June nineteenth, Castle, because of Juneteenth. I could put my own words in that, but I'll just let it slide. Uh, Fish Recovery Board, that'll be a good one to list, too. I think we have Mr. Sudhar in coming in on that one.
Hmm.
I think what is left on the agenda is gonna be an executive session. Of course, it turns out.
So we have Jessica, we'll just move into. HR and did we just have an executive session? Is that what we're doing? And. Contract negotiations or what are we? Qualifications advocate? Fifteen fifteen minutes? Uh, let's go with ten. Okay.
Okay?